Well, it's seven o'clock. That means it's time for our city council meeting to start. So, I want to welcome everyone here, of course, that's here with us this evening. And as we move through our agenda, I just want you to know that you can speak if you want to speak on any of our agenda items. Now, we do have something new here, and that's our five o'clock clock.
Five-minute clock.
Yeah, five-minute clock, that's right. And so, we're asking everyone to please try to hold their comments to five minutes. And council thinks that most, that we can do that if we think about exactly what we want to say before. And this came about because of some folks were taking advantage of the timing, and there were a lot of other things that went on that we didn't like. So, we felt like we had to get back and try to stick with, stick with what we, what we really have always had, five minutes. Now, five minutes won't apply to special, special events, proclamations, or whatever we might have here, like we have tonight, presentations. That's to be expected that that'll run over five minutes. And also, if council questions someone about what they're speaking about, then certainly, that's, that's okay as well. But we just ask everybody to do their best and try to stick with that five, five minutes. And so, at this time, we'll have an invocation and a pledge allegiance to our flag.
Dear gracious heavenly father, I want to say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for all of our many and abundant blessings, and thank you for life itself and the health and freedom you've provided us to fulfill our chosen paths and to chart our respective courses. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor and your, and for the honor of your sharing these and each of our individual responsibilities and blessings. As we gather here tonight, I pray for our mayor, I pray for all of our city staff and officials, and for this assembled council. I am asking that you graciously, graciously grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare to the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and right, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is dishonest, even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. I also ask that you remember our men in uniforms serving locally, nationally, and abroad, and that you continue to watch over them and their families as they risk so much to protect and to serve each of us. Finally, all this we ask for the benefit of the city of Aiken, our employees, and all of our citizens and loved ones. In your name we pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or deletions necessary to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, my proclamation is, is, should be listed just before the Earth Day.
Not, yeah, it's not here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items. Council in January passed two ordinances with the state infrastructure bank concerning the widening of Doerty Road at Whiskey and University Parkway. They have asked that we have an amendment to this to clarify that this money would not be used for major landscaping or beautification of the projects. It can be used for beautification or landscaping if we have to remove some trees or shrubs from some property that we're going to have to need for the construction easements. But so we can move this project along, I'd like council to consider first reading on this, and then second reading, you'll have a more detailed memo and information, but you do have the ordinances in front of you tonight.
Okay, we have another one.
Mr. Mayor, I would like us to, when we get into the last section of the petitions and requests, is discuss some of the budget items from past Thursday's meeting, please. Get discussion items.
Anything else? All right, move on. Next item, the consideration of the minutes of the work session of March 3, 2015, the work session, and the regular meeting of March 9, 2015, and the special meeting of March 14, 2015. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
I'll move second.
Okay, any discussion? Not, no hands, please. Passes unanimously. And the presentations, we have one presentation by the Energy and Environmental Committee on the proclamation. Do you want to do that first?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
If I could ask Lynn and Leonora Myers to meet me at the podium, I'd appreciate it. From time to time, we recognize citizens in the city who have exhibited one or more of the characters. As you know, Aiken is considered the character city, and tonight, we're going to recognize two people for their extraordinary level of community service. And let me read the proclamation. Whereas most people living in the United States of America are required to file income taxes by April 15 of each year, sometimes it changes, whereas the complexity of the Internal Revenue Code increases each year, whereas there is an urgent community need to help low-income seniors meet their obligations under the law, and whereas the American Association of Retired Persons, also known as AARP, establishes programs throughout the country to help low-income seniors file their state and federal income tax returns, and whereas Lynn and Leonora Myers, for the past 26 years, have supervised local operations in Aiken and North Augusta, and have developed a cadre of volunteers who they train each year, and whereas Lynn and Leonora have helped prepare and electronically file over 17,000 United States and South Carolina returns, now therefore be it resolved that the Aiken City Council recognizes the extraordinary volunteer, non-paid service to their community and its citizens provided by Lynn and Leonora Myers, and expresses our heartfelt appreciation for your community service. These folks during tax season work just about a full week, from Monday through Thursday. When they go home, Lynn will file the returns that they generate during the day at night, and that doesn't account the training and individual problems that Leonora has worked on through the years. I was pleased to have been involved with this program before getting on council, even while I was on council, to help as, as I could, but I think it's a long overdue recognition. And Leonora said she wants to say something.
Thank you. Dick knows what he's talking about, because I have a pin here that says he worked for us for 10 years, but then it got too much to be in city council and get everything done, and thank you, Dick. And we, we could not have done it without the volunteers that we have. Most of my volunteers, one year, we had 30 people working. I was the only one with a bachelor's degree. Everybody else had their master's and doctor's degrees. So, we have a very good staff. But I have announced, I am retiring as heading up the group, and we're looking for a district coordinator. The district coordinator doesn't have to know anything about taxes. He has, he has to know something about managing. And thank you once again.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Dick.
Appreciate it. Okay, back to presentation by Energy and Environmental Committee on Earth Day event in April 2015. Welcome.
Well, thank you and good evening. When I saw the clock up there and you were making your comments, I thought we were going to be the Guinea pigs. I was looking for the hook. Mary Ann and I are just delighted to be here tonight to share our vision with you about Earth Day 2015. And I serve as chairman of the Energy and Environmental Committee. Mary Ann, who is off to my left here, is really my right-hand person. She serves in many, many capacities. She's our secretary, our marketing director, our creative designs are, she is irreplaceable on, on our committee. She's been a tremendous resource. Earth Day 2015 will be on April the 18th. It'll be out here on Newberry Plaza. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Before we get into some of the specifics, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank two people who I don't really see in here tonight, but those two people are Sarah Herring of the Public Services Department, as well as Carl Oldenthal of Public Safety. Without the input of those two people, their creativity, their energy, their teamwork, it would have been impossible for our, our committee to pull off this Earth Day event the way we envision it. Our theme for the event is preserving for tomorrow what we all enjoy today. And our committee came up with, with that phraseology or that focal point to lead us in the direction we wanted to go. And where we got our inspiration was actually from a document that many of you prepared and participated in about five years ago, and this is the Aiken Tomorrow Document, which is the strategic vision of the city. And in this document, at the conclusion, there are a couple, three pages that pertain to Aiken as a green city. And we see Earth Day, the Earth Day event that we're putting on on the 18th, as a tactic that supports that portion of the strategic vision. Our goal is to engage the entire community in a festive celebration that serves as an education and awareness tool for reminding each of us of our individual responsibility to effectively respect and use the earth and its resources. As I said a moment ago, the event itself will be held on Newberry Street. It will be at April the 18th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And at this point, I would like Mary Ann Archibald to say a few things about some of the events.
Earth Day will begin, the celebration actually begins on Friday evening with lights out. During this time, 10 restaurants in Aiken will dim their lights and have candlelight dining, dining for everyone between 6:30 and 9:30. Kind of a casual reminder to us all to think about our own use of electricity and other power sources, and how we can be more aware of what we're doing. We will kick off Saturday's celebration with the inaugural Earth Day People Chase, a 5K fun run that will have something for serious runners and something for families. The People Chase will begin on the south end of Newberry Street and take participants all through the beautiful streets and parkways of historic downtown Aiken. Participants will be able, as they're running, will encounter obstacles that are fun and challenging. For instance, they'll have a chance to crawl under police barricades. They'll have a chance to scale serpentine walls. Let's see, what else are we doing? Let's see, crawl and, oh, trail run and jump down trees in Hitchcock Woods to go in there and do some of that. There's, they'll be jumping over 500-pound recycled cardboard barriers and slide across the hood of a police car. You should really have a good time with them. And at the end, have a chance to run the stairs right here in the municipal center. Following the People Chase, the Newberry Street Festival Center will be filled with all kinds of activities for the whole family. There will be food vendors, two performances of a puppet show, local disc jockey Ed Jurado will provide music, and Aiken's own professional theater company, Porkchop Productions, will be on hand with their innovative and interactive version of Stone Soup.
Mary Ann has brought you up to speed with a lot of the fun activities that occur on Earth Day, and I'm going to be like Paul Harvey and now share with you the rest of the story. I am pleased to say that we have 35 exhibitors who will be in attendance on Newberry on the 18th. And I'm not going to go through all these names, but you can see at a glance that they come in all shapes and form, major companies, colleges, university. Each of these activities will present some new opportunity for us to learn about what is going on. There'll be presentations on, on wind and solar energy. You will have the, the University of Aiken will be talking about its sustainability program. It goes on and on and on. And despite the difference in the scope and size and ultimate purpose of each of these organizations, advocacy groups, our businesses, for Earth Day, what they will have in common is, is the message of sustainability and individual environmental responsibilities. We will have interesting speakers, and that said with an exclamation point, not with a question mark. Mayor Kavanaugh has graciously agreed to say a few words. We might ask him to make a couple presentations, recognition words, that sort of thing. The city manager's office, we are expecting that they will be speaking about Aiken's 25th anniversary of its curb recycling program. I'm told that Aiken is the first city in the state of South Carolina to implement such a program 25 years ago. Our keynote speaker will be David C. Moody. He'll be from SRS, DOE. He, in, in common terms that we can all understand, will be talking about sustainability concepts and activities that have occurred out at the site. Earlier, I thanked a couple people in particular who have been instrumental in helping us create this document. In front of you here on this slide is the list of our sponsors. The Energy and Environmental Committee has self-funded this event through the generosity of these particular sponsors. I'm pleased to announce Savannah River Remediation as our presenting sponsor for Earth Day 2015. And the rest that you see up there, the other 17, are what we would call benefactor sponsors. Collectively, their generosity has, has supported the event that we've been describing here. I think in conclusion, what I'd, I'd like to do is to reach out to the, really to the citizens of Aiken. I would urge you that when you go home tonight, mark on your calendar in ink that if you want to be here on April the 18th, talk to your friends, talk to your family about that. There will be something for everybody on the 18th. Come have a sandwich, come see 36 exhibits, see a hydrogen-fueled car, listen to the music, you know, enjoy the day and learn something from the day. And I think if collectively we're able to bring together all these resources, the sponsors, the exhibitors, the citizens, onto Newberry on the 18th, I think maybe, just maybe, there will be a chance that in the future, when people think about the Aiken Augusta area in April, will think about Aiken Earth Day first and the Master second. So, that concludes our comments.
More power to you.
And I'm open, and I'm open for questions.
Great job planning. I don't think we've ever seen a Earth Day event of this magnitude. All of the extras that you've added is really going to make this station, this whole event very special.
Thank you.
Can't wait.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, let's see.
Ron, do you have any of your board members besides yourself and the two of you? I just wanted to know if you had more board members here.
We have none that are here, but our committee is a total of seven. Each of which is an appointee of you in front of us. So, that's Andy Allen and Bob Newbern and Dave Bowe.
Frank Wright.
I'm sorry?
Frank Wright.
Frank Wright, and one other I'm not thinking of. Oh, Tom Stradipo.
Norman Devitt.
Norman. Okay, so, it is a power, power committee, I'll tell you. Lots of energy, lots of capability.
Ron, please thank them all for working together, and thank you so much. You too.
Thank you, Ron and Mary Ann. Thank you both.
And to all business, first item is approval of appointments and a discussion of acquaintees to the various city boards, commissions, and committees.
We have four appointments tonight for council. Catherine Thomas has a reappointment to the Arts Commission, Tina McCarty to the Accommodations Committee, Bill Hagerty to the Building Code Board of Appeals, and Rose O'Hayes for the Arts Committee. These are the four appointments for tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and second?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Short hands, please, in favor. Passes unanimously. Do we have any nominations for next, our next meeting? Okay. Item two, second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to approve repurposing of CPST funds. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, I'm going to read the ordinance by title. It's an ordinance to repurpose the use of funds from the capital project sales tax. You approved this at your last meeting for first reading. Essentially, we are changing on Project 14, 23, and 35, increasing the funds for the downtown streetscape by 100,000, decreasing the proposed park at the landfill and leaving $300,000 in that account, and increasing the account for the Northside Regional Recreational Park to $4,179,088.69. And in CP3, moving the University Parkway project ahead of the Hitchcock Parkway project. So, for city council's consideration, this is the second reading in public hearing of ordinance changing the funding and repurposing a project shown in the attached exhibits, CPST 2 and 3.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll move approval with this with a, an amendment to it or an addition to it. Project number eight, which is the Northside Renewal Project, that there's still another $14,200 need to be transferred to fund 12, and I would like for council to consider moving $550,000 from the PS building expansion up to the computers to purchase the software that we spoke of at the Thursday meeting. So, that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Paul.
Do you use CPST for software?
You're, you're talking on CPST 3?
3.
Okay, and you would like to move five, you'd like to move some money to pay for the software?
Yes. In my opinion, it probably should have been included in that, you know, along the way, but it wasn't, so.
The only problem with that is then there would not be enough funding for the public safety expansion.
Well, one of the proposals before was to combine the PS building expansion, or really combine the new firehouse with the PS building expansion, because we didn't need a firehouse.
Well, the vast majority of the work at the Training Center has, was completed earlier, and so they were going to add the two together so they could, they could get more of a major push at the public safety building for the expansion. Uncertain as to how much that final amount's going to be, because they haven't started any preliminary design or planning on it.
Well, I bring it up because, you know, we were just told at the Thursday meeting and in, about needing the software, and of course, we put in, I forgot if it was a dozen or 15 new computers, so I assume we had to put, buy software for those with that account also.
The software that we have with New World Systems is outdated. There, have asked for the new software for a number of years. It's going to cost about $600,000. In this year's budget, there's 300,000 with the remaining 300,000 to come in next year's budget. If you, I'd like to hear from Charles if we're going to move that money from the, let's see, I think you said, from the public safety building expansion and move it into software. I don't know how that would meet with your other...
Well, we could also move it from the new fire, fire station headquarters, simply the previous announcement was we didn't need that because of our fire rating.
Thank you, sir. The thought in combining the CPST money, there's $900,000 in the renovation of public safety headquarters, which will not get us very far in the renovation of it due to the infrastructure need at public safety headquarters. And so, the thought was to combine the money that was in there for the new firehouse to, to be able to take that a little further, because there's some space needs and some, as well as architecture needs. But that was the original thought. It had not been brought forward about the software at that point, so that was just our proposals and the discussions with the city manager at that time.
Now, how soon, this software, if you've got half of it in the budget for this year and assuming half in the next year's budget, how, when would you be buying the software? Would you wait till next year to buy it?
We'd go ahead and get the bids in now and pay for half of it this year, and then the other half for next year.
Right, that's an option.
Yes.
Obviously, it is.
So, your priority right now is the new firehouse and the space that's needed for the architectural?
Public safety.
No, it's for the, the software is a priority.
Right, I know that, I know that.
I don't want to make that mistake, and I think working with the city manager, we've been, have figured out a way to come up with those funds over the next couple of years. The public safety headquarters renovation would be the priority. The headquarters, as Mr. Ebner had mentioned, I mean, the fire station due to our recent ISO inspection is not needed at this point. And so, the thought was to put it with the renovation money to be able to, be able to renovate at a, at a greater extent than initially thought. Did I explain that clearly?
Yeah. What I would recommend is, if we have these questions about it, because I haven't had a chance to talk to chief about these changes, that I'd rather go ahead and table this to the next meeting. There isn't, again, there's no rush on getting this done, but if we're going to go ahead and make these changes, as council member Ebner has stated, I'd like to get a little more input.
And I think we're reacting to the comment made last Thursday that this software has been desperately needed for 10 years, and I don't know about the rest of council members. First time I'd ever heard of it.
Well, we did receive about two or three months ago, an end-of-life letter, basically. It was brought to the city manager and was worked on immediately. And so, this has been an aging process with the, to be able to transfer to the Microsoft product, but because they're not supporting it anymore.
Okay. Well, can you, if it takes two more years to do it, can you still operate, I guess, you know, operated efficiency, I should say.
It, it's operational as we speak today. It's the, the maintenance on it, you know, if there isn't... It's the maintenance on it, you know, if there is, if there is an issue that comes up, they still have people supporting it, but it's dwindling daily. There's less than 30 customers that are on the series that we're on right now.
Nationwide.
Nationwide, that's right.
Well, my reason for bringing it up is to draw attention to it, and we sure want to, you know, we bought a lot of new computers before when we first got this, and I just want to be sure we get their attention, so.
So if we wanted to table this aspect, would we amend the motion or would we have a new motion? How would we?
The motion hasn't been seconded. Oh, yeah.
I second it. It would be an amendment and not to approve the portion that involves...
Well, he had, he had a change other than this one.
We would continue it. If you table it, it dies, if I'm not mistaken.
Continue. I call table, you call.
I mean, you could pass what's on the page, and then we could do the rest next time if you wanted to.
I think it's worthwhile to do a little more discussion on that. I think a lot of us heard that for the first time, and obviously, Public Safety does a lot to keep everything up to date, so I'm okay with continuing it to the next meeting.
Okay. But Roger, would you like this stuff here?
I move that we continue the motion to the next meeting, motion and amendment.
The entire, we're talking about this entire ordinance?
Yes. It'd be the entire ordinance.
I withdraw my second.
Item number two, sir. Do you second the motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Show of hands, please.
Do we need a second? We have a second.
And what I'll do at the next meeting, I'll have a chance then to sit down with Public Safety and determine, have a much better idea what the costs are for this expansion and to see if we want to take some of that money and to move it into the software so we get it all in one year.
Well, it may be, if you're doing half of it in July 1st, maybe you just need $300,000 or $250,000 from here.
Correct.
But I don't think we ought to wait two more years, is my whole point.
I understand.
And I agree.
Right. And a new business, item one, approval of Accommodations Tax Committee recommendations.
Every year at this time, the Tax Committee meets and they distribute funding for a number of very worthy events that take place in Aiken. This year, they have made a recommendation that $287,500 be used for the listing of events that you see before you. This will leave a small amount of money in contingency for anything that would come up in the next several months to have available for that new program that may arise at some point. I know that the chairperson is here, Peggy Penland, if you have any questions of her. Otherwise, we're asking council to consider the approval of the Accommodation Tax Committee recommendation for this funding.
I have a question. Where's Peggy?
Didn't think you were going to get away, did you? Just hoping on it.
Expert at this by now.
What can I help you with, Mr. Mayor?
I'm wondering why the Center for African-American History and Art and Culture didn't get a little bit more money than they did.
Okay. Everyone on the committee wants to really support this center. What we found out during the meeting, you know, we had five hours of meetings one day, and then we acted upon it the following day. The center needs to improve their application and their marketing efforts. The website was not up to date, and there were not sufficient efforts in place to justify the funds. There were, there was a $22,000 award. But in order to receive more funding, they need to improve their marketing presence, their website, their Facebook page. There had been no activity whatsoever for a long period of time on their Facebook page since December. And we've been through this with Joanne, and I think a gentleman named Ben came to the meeting as well, very nice man. And we really, really do want to support the exhibits and the marketing of this center.
So Peggy, when did you meet with Joanne and explain the problem to her?
Joanne has been to our meetings for a number of years, so she's not a new applicant. She knows how we grade, you know, we have a matrix that we developed at your request, and each, what the thoroughness of the proposal, all different aspects of the application are graded. And everybody grades them, and then we average them, and then the next day, we allocate the funding accordingly.
So does the activity on the Facebook page, are you talking about the outside activity, other people who might go to that page?
No, 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 no. Their activity.
Or them just putting events on that page?
Their activity.
And updates on that page?
Yes. So during the meeting, Regina Brackett looked up their website and their Facebook page, which needed a lot of help. So our recommendation to them is to please, if they have to, you know, I think Joanne, Joanne, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. She told me that they were hiring somebody, they had hired someone to do the Facebook page, but from December until, when was this, March, there was very, little to no activity. And the website, there were no, there was a lot of, there were a lot of missing links. So I don't know whether they need to hire an advertising agency, you know, that's money spent, but somebody needs to do some professional work here, that's all.
Can we hear from you, Joanne, as to whether or not you want, you, in the process of...
Wait, wait a minute.
I just wanted to see if she was...
Peggy, thank you.
What we did is we went through the funding and we awarded funding, and then when we found out how much was left over, we went back and gave more. And everybody's concerned about it and everybody wants to support it.
We appreciate it.
I just asked that because it looked like that most everybody got close to what they wanted.
Right.
And that's, and that's good, but that one stood out.
Right. Peggy, should they leave up those areas that you've identified? And they, question pointedly is if they need extra money, do you have extra money that they could come to you and say, so we've done these things and our marketing area is not, we don't have sufficient funds? There, we have some money in reserve. Okay. And that's what we would like to see more than anything. Okay. Now, one thing you do need to realize is that the Center for the African-American History is similar to the Center for the Arts Center of Marketing. It's different than what we normally get in that it is for annual marketing of the center. Right. So it's really hard to track. Like, we asked Joanne what they would be using. Typically, we request, well, we really do request surveys. And I know I was at the trials the other day, and for your information, the trials was the only event that got 100 percent because they've done every single thing that we've asked them to do over the last three-year period. And I personally saw the lady asking for surveys, looking for people from out of town, where are you staying, are you staying in a hotel? So we asked Joanne what their process, method would be, and she said they would have a sign-in book.
I think it's important to keep in mind, the purpose of this money is to encourage people to come to the city of Aiken.
Right.
And that's where you've got to spend the money. We've had this issue before, and every time it comes up, we try to negotiate and take away your reserve, which isn't fair. The committee has gone through a process, and, I mean, the rules are clear, and I think you've done a great job.
Well, it is, it is more difficult to track the exhibition marketing or the center marketing, but if you take a look at all the applications, you will see that the $22,000 is, I mean, it's more than antiques in the heart of Aiken. Right. So it's not a small award.
And I'm not asking you to change your, your process at all. I think you have done a great job. I was just trying to see where Joanne was as far as changes that she intends to make so that she can be eligible for more dollars.
We're ready to hear it, hear about it, and we do have some funds in reserve.
Right. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion about this any further? If not, show of hands, please. Pass is unanimously. Item two is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property located at 300 Reserve Club Drive in Woodside Plantation. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. The ordinance by its title is an ordinance amending the concept plan for property located at 3,000, at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive and owned by Woodside Golf LLC. They intend to increase their facility from 9,132 square feet to 12,000, by additional 12,961 square feet, so it's more than doubling the size of the facility. And for that reason, we have asked them to revise or amend the concept plan that they originally gave us back in 2006. This will add 99 parking spaces to the building. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this at their March meeting with three conditions. One, that a revised concept plan be submitted prior to the building permit showing a development summary for all of Hollow Creek at the reserve, including the total area, percentage of open space, number of dwelling units by type, and dwelling unit density. Number two, that the parking lot lighting shall meet the requirements for outdoor lighting found in the planned commercial. And that number three, that any concerns regarding the extension of the street right away through the parking lot be addressed. And so for your consideration tonight, this is first reading of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property located at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive for expansion of the clubhouse.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed the Planning Commission minutes, and I, if you've been to the reserve, anytime they have a big golf tournament, there's just not enough parking. Now they're going to double it, and they're only going to add 99 slots. Now, I want to read from the Planning Commission minutes. While the project does have enough parking spaces as required by our zoning ordinance, commission has pointed out that this calculation is based on the use of the clubhouse and does not include parking for other uses such as golfers on the course, the tennis courts, or the swimming area. I mean, there's got to be something wrong with our zoning ordinance if we're only, if we're saying we only need 99 more. We don't have enough as it is today. It just, it just strikes me that we're, we're building into a problem because, now, it's not a daily problem, but on a typical summer day, there'll be a lot of golfers there, there'll be tennis players, there'll be swimming, pickleball, as we have recently gotten into, is becoming very popular, and then they're going to add and make, I don't know, I couldn't read how many people the, the ballrooms would accommodate. Do you know, Reggie?
Yeah.
Pat Cunningham is here to answer that if you'd like.
Oh, is he here? No, Pat knows, yeah.
Who is? Yeah. Pat's not, but the main man's here.
Ah, okay, good. And I hope he can alleviate my concerns.
I hope so, too. I'm Kent Baldwin with Woodside Development. Thanks for considering this, this change we're looking to make. But to answer your questions, we, the 99 spaces that we're adding, that, that will take us up to a little over 210 spaces, 213 to be exact. Right now, we have 114. We're not adding to the, to the size of the, the golf course, we're just expanding the square footage and the size of the club. The addition will add ballrooms so we can have larger events, a larger kitchen so we can have more activities going on at the same time. But the large golf outings and a large wedding event will rarely if ever happen at the same time. Usually, the large golf outings happen on a Monday when the course is closed, large wedding, which, which would take place in the ballrooms, would generally occur on a weekend. And, you know, there will be some responsibility that we have to make sure that we're not scheduling conflicting events that would, you know, overload our, our parking design and, and count that we have. We understand that concern, it's a concern of ours, but it's, to us, it's, it's more of an internal coordination and, and management tasks that we have. But, but the course itself and the, the parking that you see at these large events, this additional parking, we feel confident will handle more than a typical event that we have at the Reserve Club will hand, will propose. So we feel like we've got adequate parking for those larger events and the conflicts we'll be able to avoid.
How many people will you be able to take an event, at an event once you're finished?
Well, we, you know, we kind of feel the size of the facility will be able to handle a 250-person wedding, probably the largest event that we would have. 50 staff roughly, so roughly 300 people. You know, we kind of see at an event, if 75 or so of those folks ride together, we would still have adequate parking for, you know, the number of folks that would, that would be at an event. A large golf outing, probably the largest golf outing that we would, that we would have, you know, that type of a tournament, maybe 200 people for the, if you loaded up the golf courses. Generally, on a tournament like that, they're held on a Monday. If it's a shotgun start, everyone starts and finishes at the same time. So those events would only happen on a Monday and would rarely be when we have other uses going on at the club.
Thank you very much.
Sure. It sounds like you've got it figured out pretty well.
Yeah, we think so.
How about the next...
Well, we look forward to that.
Have you got more room out there for, for the next?
We do. We think this will, will really, you know, upgrade the facility and, and prepare us for the future, and we look forward to, to getting it underway.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous.
And just for council's information, we've been meeting with the, the Reserve Club, and they're very anxious to get started. In fact, they would like to have started about a month or two ago. But we did require this concept plan change. We will be meeting with them on Friday so we could get their plans and have our inspection department actually start reviewing the plan so when you approve this, hopefully, if you approve this on the 13th of April, they won't have to go through that process of waiting to get everything done by stamp ahead of time. So we're trying to move that project forward.
Item three is acceptance of the South Carolina 19 corridor study as information. Mr. LeDuke, please.
For the last several years, the county and the city together have been working on a study on 19 all the way from the Edgefield County line into town. The study has been completed. It's being reviewed through the Highway Department and through others, and we just wanted to make you aware of it. The document itself is quite thick. As you can see, I'm not asking you to approve this because I don't want you to get involved like you did with the bicycle situation where within it, there are several things that are being recommended, but I'm giving this to you as information, and as those events or projects come forward, then each individual project would come forward for approval process. So this is just being given to you as information.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Pass is unanimous. Item four, approval of architect for, of an architect for the senior youth center.
Yes, sir. We've been fairly fast-tracking this project, and a number of you have been involved in this. We have Glenn Parker here tonight if you have any questions, but we received proposals from a number of different architectural firms, and last week, we sat down with two of them, and we are requesting your approval tonight of Cheetum, Fletcher, Scott Architects, who will be designing this approximately $3.7 million project for $261,500. Why don't you go ahead and vote on this, and then I'd just like to make a couple of comments as to the process of what we're doing here because this will go into our process in the future for several other things.
Was this, how many other bidders did we have?
Was there five, Glenn?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
And they narrowed it down to a couple, and then we re-interviewed them and asked for a proposal, an actual proposal.
Two were South Carolina companies, I understand.
Okay.
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
All right. Discussion?
Yes, two, two comments. One of them, can the, is it appropriate to Mr. City Manager to put a copy of the con...
One of them, can the, is it appropriate to Mr. City Manager to put a copy of the contract in the minutes of the meeting?
Absolutely, and that's, we apologize, but we didn't have a chance to get together with these firms till Thursday after the agenda went out, so.
And I understand that, but I sure want to be sure that that's in there and that Ms. Wrightout puts it in there. The other thing, and I had sent Glenn an email earlier today, they do a sixty percent estimate check, and it'll be about three months away, maybe four. I think that the city ought to go through the other, all of the other necessary things to get this building going, the furniture, all of the outfitting. And so I'd like that to be a part of this, that when they do the sixty percent estimate check, that the city go through all of the other extras and update all of that cost and present it to council. That'll be three or four months away. That's my two comments.
Any other comments? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous.
The comment I wanted to make was, there has been a lack at times of having council being aware of what's happening with architectural and engineering contracts and projects that are coming forward. And I believe the process that we have been, have instituted over the last several months of having you involved throughout the process of hiring that engineer or architect, coming before you with approvals to start the projects, with updates in between, is something that I will certainly make mention to the new city manager, but I believe it's a good process for council to continue to follow. And Gary and I have had some discussions, and I'm not too sure how formally we have to go through this to make sure that process is followed. But it's very important that council is knowledgeable of everything that's happening, where the money's being spent, how it's being spent, and making sure that we have the necessary funds to carry through these projects, and not just to say, okay, we're ready to move forward, and then find out later on we don't have the money to accomplish them. So however we can establish that before the twenty-seventh, I think would be a great idea.
Yes, if I address the city council a minute. We do a lot of major projects, and the state regulations require us, which I'm told, that the city follows the regulations, the state procurement system, and it's a certain-sized project, but surely, when we get up to five-hundred thousand and better, that we go through the appropriate bidding process. Most of these bigger jobs would require some type of concept plan, just like Mr. LeDuke mentioned on the Eustace Center. We did the same thing on the alley. This gets the energy of the citizens involved, and it also gives you an idea of what a top-end cost would be. Then we went and we had local aquatic firms, which Augusta and Aiken area, put a proposal together and let be available for the citizen review if they want to. And we have about another thirty million dollars' worth of capital project sales tax to do, ten on two and about twenty on the other. And then we also do some larger projects in the city. Mr. Grinton has been very good about going out and getting bids and coming back to council and say, hey, this is a project I want to do, because he's got a couple million dollars out on the street now. So I don't know if we need to make it formal or not, but we need to do something to say that we follow the state guidelines. However, we need to do that.
And I'll just turn to Gary. I don't know if we need to formally do this, but it's been the practice in the past, it needs to continue to be the practice, that the city manager works with council to make you aware of the projects, then get you involved in the bidding process and the funding process for each one of these projects. So again, this is a great time, because as you get a brand-new city manager in here, he's going to do whatever he expects council, whatever council expects of him.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Or petitions and requests. Item one.
Sir, we have.
What do we got?
We added the first reading under new business.
Two readings.
For these two ordinances, if we could.
Okay.
We have two ordinances that we handed out to you tonight, and I apologize for the late minute that Jim Holly has been working with Gary on this for probably the last two or three weeks, and we finally got the final approval from Jim Holly, I guess, as of today, even though last Friday, it seemed like I thought we had the final approval. So I'm going to just read both of these by its title, and then what we'd like to do is ask your approval of these two, and then you'll have more information for second reading. The first one is an ordinance amending ordinance number zero-one-two-six-two-zero-fifteen to authorize the city of Aiken to enter into an amended intergovernmental agreement with the South Carolina Department of Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the Doherty Road at Whiskey Road widening. And then the second one is an ordinance amending ordinance number zero-one-twelve-two-zero-fifteen to authorize the city of Aiken to enter into an amended intergovernmental agreement for the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the University Parkway widening project. If you look at the last two pages, this is the exhibit, or this is the changes that they would like to see. And again, it all involves landscaping. The Highway Department did not want to have CIV money used for landscaping of these projects. We did ask that this would not involve any landscaping, changes that were made because we had to cut down some trees or shrubbery on adjoining private property. So the essence of this is that landscaping and beautification for the project, other than for required bracing or other erosion control measures or replacement or repair of trees, vegetation, and landscaping affected by the construction of the project, could be done, but not other landscaping. And Gary, I don't know if you have anything further you wanted to mention, because you've been working with Jim on this.
The best way I would know how to describe it is, this is similar to what you would expect if you were getting a mortgage from the bank, and they wanted to put in some requirements that, you know, either you take it or you don't get the money. And this is one of those kinds of changes that the Transportation Infrastructure Bank felt strongly about, and so it's really kind of being pushed on us. We really don't have a choice but to accept it. If we don't accept these changes, then they probably decide they don't want to give us the funding that they've agreed to give us earlier. And so the changes are set forth in the ordinance, they're highlighted in yellow, and they're, you know, really not unreasonable requests, it's just kind of a last-minute sort of thing.
Okay. Two ordinances, do we not, since it's just?
Yes, yes, yes. Just first reading, reading in the title, and then you'll have second reading at next piece.
We'll take them separately, I think.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second for the first?
Approval of both ordinances at first reading?
You could approve both.
Okay, we'll take them both, then.
Second.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, under petitions and requests, approval to unfreeze employee positions. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. We have a few appointments here that we'd like to go ahead and advertise for. One is a maintenance worker in PRT, another one in public service, and we've been holding open two cadet positions, and we'd like to now fill those in public safety. So for your consideration tonight, this is unfreezing these positions.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
So move, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Just a question, are the cadets, do they really fight fires? Do they have to be graduates of the fire academy? Oh, you do? Okay.
In the past, the cadets, and I'm talking way in the past, but at one time, the cadets just kind of hung around, and they helped out here and there. We now have a formal program that we have them go through, and as they meet these qualifications, then they get a bump up. They kind of go from Cadet A to Cadet B to, you know, until they kind of graduate from this whole program.
Because they start pretty low for being a firefighter. But they'll move up as they get?
Yes, they will.
Graduate, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, show of hands, please. I don't know if we did it, no, we're doing it again. Okay, pass is unanimous. Item two, requests to restructure the stormwater organization.
At our February third work session, we presented a reorganization of our stormwater team that we'd like to have. We are now having to meet more and more regulations through DHEC and EPA because of the level that we are now at. We therefore would like to go ahead and get a stormwater engineer to start moving some of these projects forward. We basically have five and about a third person currently, and we're revised that to have just five. It'll add about five thousand dollars to the salaries. This is in the new budget, but if we can get started today, that way, we could probably get the stormwater engineer on board. It'll probably take thirty to sixty days minimum to get that person on board, and we'd like to get started as soon as possible. So we're asking your consideration to allow us to reorganize the stormwater division and primarily to start advertising and to bring in our stormwater engineer.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in a second?
So move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve. I second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question, right to regard in the stormwater engineer. Is this a rare specialty?
In many ways, it is. Either we're going to have to train the person that we bring in. Stormwater engineering is not something that they really teach an awful lot at the universities, and you just basically get your experience by on-the-job training.
It's not taught in civil engineering curriculum?
There's some stormwater classes, but stormwater has become almost a unique field unto itself. We do fortunately have a engineer on staff right now who has an extensive background in stormwater engineering, and so either he will help train that person, or we'll move him in that position at least for a time period of time.
Mr. Mayor, I had some email discussions with Mr. LeDuke and Mr. Smith. We have, some time back, we said we would set up the stormwater as well as the solid waste as enterprise funds. And that is in the, it is in the budget that that's how it's going to be, but what I'd like to do is put those two enterprise funds on the April thirteenth agenda, so that we can have them approved, and that way, when they get into the budget, it'll flow through with the budget and not be something we have to approve there. So if we could put those two on the agenda, I think both of those have to have council approval, I think. I think, Mr. LeDuke, the two funds.
Well, typically, and again, council would do it one of two different ways, the budget, every year that's approved, typically, there's a change or two that's fairly major within the budget. In this particular case, we're setting up solid waste as an enterprise fund. It is set up. We were able to, over the weekend, get it balanced, based on the comments we had last Thursday night, so it'll stay at the seventeen-dollar level. We could continue the process of just implementing it as part of the budget process, or we could go ahead and have an ordinance now saying that we're going to set up this as an enterprise fund, and here is the enterprise fund, and here's the balanced budget for it. I would prefer that we wait till our budget process, but I could go either way, because that's already been balanced. Same thing with the stormwater. It was a standalone budget or an enterprise, but it was not a full enterprise. It was probably at an eighty, ninety percent level enterprise. We have now had benefits in there. We have fully put in all the equipment that needed to be in that budget, so we can now track the expenditures versus the revenue coming in for stormwater, and we'll be able to do the same thing with the solid waste. So it's really up to council. We could go through that process beforehand, or we could wait and just do it part of the budget.
I think in the case of stormwater, since there is an increase involved, I think we ought to go ahead and vote before we get to the budget for the increase, so that you'll be sure your numbers in the budget include that increase. And I'm sure you probably have it in there now, but it was two dollars and ten cents a month increase, and it's needed, no doubt about it. It's been ten or twelve years or fifteen years since we've increased that fund. I guess I'd just like to have as much of this, not as much, but some increases done ahead of time, similar to what we've done with the water and sewer rates.
And I can only go back when I was city manager. I believe that just about every time we had increases, or at least the vast majority of the times, they were part of the budgetary process. So it could be done either way. I know that recently, we've had standalone changes in the fees even prior to the budget being completed.
Well, if it doesn't matter.
I'm comfortable, either way, whatever council would like to do.
Why don't we do it?
Gary, I don't know if you have anything, I mean, agree with what I'm saying?
Whatever council desire is.
Okay. Well, the point is, I wanted to be sure that, we discussed this in our Thursday meeting, but it hadn't been discussed, if you will, at a council public meeting. That was a public meeting we had last Thursday. So as long as we read that, read the increase into the minutes, I would be pleased with that. I think if you could do, read into the minutes, the two-dollar-and-ten-cent increase will be in the budget.
That is correct, and my plan right now, I'll talk to John Clem about this, but I will either the week before he comes or the week after he comes, have our first budget meeting with council. In other words, we'll be all prepared and set. Right now, I'd like to have it probably before he comes, because after he comes, it's just going to be crazy for a week or two, and I'd like to sit down with council and to be able to say, here, here's the budget, here's the changes we have in the budget, make sure everything is the way you want it, so that we could get some of these, if there needs to be any other changes. I don't think there probably will be, because we've had a lot of discussion, a lot more discussion than I've ever had with council concerning budgets, and so therefore, I think we're on the right track, but right now, tentatively, if Sarah could work with me on it, we'd probably be sometime in the week of the twentieth having a budget meeting.
I would expect that your memo will be a little bit longer and far more detailed than it has in the past, and hopefully, will include the increases that we have, that are becoming effective with the budget, everything from public safety to public works and so forth, so that it will summarize.
To the best of my ability.
And that'll be good for the incoming city manager as well, so we'll see the changes that are taken with this.
Yes.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Roger, just for my clarity, and you probably have said this already, we are hiring an engineer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we are going to expose him to someone to get the training?
Correct.
Okay.
If you can't get one that.
We currently have an engineering technician.
Right.
And it's probably more a technician than engineering technician.
Okay.
Working in stormwater, and this will give us someone who has the training and background in engineering, and hopefully, finds someone who has a, some measure of stormwater expertise.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is number two. We've got a motion in the second already. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass is unanimous. Item three is a funding for improvements to the administration and finance building. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Thank you. Last Thursday, we had a work session concerning improvements at the current finance and administration building, which we laid out for you. These, the major ones includes a relook through the lobby, taking the large engine that's in there out, making it more Aiken-friendly with displays, some better seating in there, more prominent area for the person who's going to greet people as they come in there, probably some monitors and TVs that are showing some videos. We are also going to go ahead and take the locks off so that people, visitors and the public, could go upstairs to see the city manager, assistant city manager, and the HR director. That means changes to the elevator and some of the doors and a few partitions. There's some work that has to be done on the outside with stormwater and on the parking lot area. And we believe that we can make these improvements for less than eighty-five thousand, but we're asking for up to eighty-five thousand dollars with the funds to come from the CPST III min- but we're asking for up to $85,000 with the funds to come from the CPST III municipal building account. And so, we're asking for your approval tonight. If you have any questions. Stuart's here. He's the person who's been working on all this, and I know he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion in a second for this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request here for $85,000 and we make, and I add this to it, we make every effort that the assistant city manager have an outside window.
Absolutely.
I ask that for a reason, so.
So, he could jump out if he needs to.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I have two questions.
Okay.
Could we get a second?
He got a second. He's second.
He did, yes. The first one is, is it gonna take us 4,000, cost $4,000 to remove the hideous engine? What are we putting in place of it?
It costs a whole lot more than that to put it in there, so.
I thought they put it in for free.
No, no.
But it was donated.
Right, but we.
We paid them to put it in?
Well, we had it moved in for approximately $4,000. That's how much we had to pay individuals to get it moved in. We had to rent some heavy equipment and so forth. It took almost all day to get it moved in.
So, where are we moving it to?
They're taking it back.
Taking it back.
Taking it back.
Right? Is that right, Stuart? I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Yes.
We have asked Yorg to take it back with MTU, and he has agreed to do so.
And the other question is, there are security cameras or anything in the city building?
There, we have cameras in the administration and finance building. There are currently cameras in the, at the payment area that look down on the transaction that occurs, and we would put some additional cameras that would face the individuals that are paying or transacting business with our clerks. So, we need to have that facial recognition.
Thank you, Stuart.
We, we are leaving, we're leaving the protective equipment in for our employees.
You mean the glass?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But we are putting microphones in there, so.
That's correct for better interaction between staff and customers.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? If not, we've got a motion in a second. Show of hands, please. Pass as unanimous.
And that was an amended motion. I'm not gonna forget, that was an amended motion.
You're buying a window, did you say?
Item four, request to amend retirement for the assistant city manager.
Yes, sir. We'd like to go ahead and make a request that the assistant city manager be able to get more retirement time. You have a contractual agreement concerning this. It's very short. It's modeled somewhat after what the city council was able to give to the former, former city manager, that's me, back in 2002. And so, we're asking your consideration tonight to enter to an agreement with the assistant city manager to purchase one-year service in the city pension plan for every three years. He retains, commencing on May 1st, 2015, remains.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second for that?
I still move.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Just, just to point out that this is an incentive, and this is good for the city. This is keeping a valued employee with an opportunity to retire like every other employee in the city, and it's a reflection of our high regard for the work that Stuart has done.
I think the city manager should also mention another reason we're doing that about if we, as we apply for some of these other jobs coming on, if somebody is from the state of South Carolina in the state pension system, they may not apply for a job if there's not some way to relieve the pension requirement. So, you may wanna comment on that, Mr. Ladue, how that would work.
As, as we hire our new planning director, PRT director, there may be an occasion that we would have to look at the pension system we have. We are already doing that with our new city manager that we have coming in to make arrangements for that. And each one of those will be looked at on a case-by-case basis. On a personal note, I just do, I would like to just, and I'll probably say a lot more of this at the next meeting that we have, but thanks Stuart very much because he, without him, I, there's no way that I'd be able to do this job. He has just, just done a great job in assisting myself, working with staff as needed, working with other citizens, and well-deserved what council is proposing to do tonight.
Let me just add, Mr. Mayor, that one of the things that I applaud about Stuart, Stuart, this is not Stuart's night, okay? This is not, but you are extremely responsive, but that goes for the entire leadership team of the city. I tend to talk to Stuart more than others and try not to call him unless it's quite urgent, but I can tell you, when I call him, he gets back as quickly as possible with a response, and I appreciate that. And sometimes you have to track people like me down in order to get that response to me, and I appreciate you doing that as well. Thank you.
I'll second that, too.
I'll, I'll, I'll third it.
Appreciate you, Stuart, so much. Okay.
You can vote.
Huh?
I vote.
Yes, we do.
We did. Well, I, well, no, we didn't. I made a motion. Somebody said, "Have it voted."
Philip, second it, so.
Okay. Passes. Get out of there. Got so tangled up thinking, Stuart. And that's a good thing. Okay. Discussion of email retention policy?
Yes, this has been a very interesting process for us. We have always retained emails for a certain length of time, and for key positions, we have kept the hard drives from their computers. But the email policy that we have, although it lets our employees know and council know that all emails become part of the public record, we really don't have a retention record concerning this. We've contacted the archives and history and asked them, how long should emails be kept? And they said, well, depending on the document, they just become part of the history of the city of Aiken. So, we, I have asked Gary Smith to formalize a policy, and before we take that policy and give it final blessing, I thought it would be good if council could have a short discussion on this with Gary because it does affect each one of you through this process. We just had a request for some emails. I think Gary told me this morning was 3,000.
789.
89 emails that he had then to spend hours going through each one to see which ones could be released and which ones couldn't. But we want to go ahead and make the process easier and more understandable and to be transparent on everything we do, and this includes emails. And so, with that, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, turn this over to Gary.
Thank you, Roger. As we, as I got into this discussion with our IT people, Angela and Robert, who were both very helpful in helping me to understand how this process works, the main thing that became clear is the city has a very good records retention policy, fully in compliance with the South Carolina Department of Archives. Our clerk, Ms. Rideout, trains extensively on the requirements that the state has for making sure that we retain records that we're supposed to retain. The, and the archives people have told us and our IT people, when it comes to emails, the fact that the document is an email does not make it any more special than our regular records. And without going into too much great detail, obviously, the city has to retain all of its ordinance. And you have, you have to retain your ordinance for a certain period of time. Those are the important documents. Contracts, resolutions, deeds. You know, these documents are things that obviously are important records for the city of Aiken's history, and those documents have to be retained in accordance with the Archives Department's policy. Emails can be an important record that are required to be archived, but they may not be. And typically, we see emails that involve discussions about things that the city is working on. At some point, those emails become a, an email from the city manager or a council member that says, "Let's create an ordinance within these parameters." And then, the ordinance comes before council. Obviously, that ordinance then becomes a public record that has to be saved. Under the Freedom of Information Act presently, any email that city council or the city has in its possession is a document that is subject to being disclosed under the Freedom of Information Act. And so, even if we're not obligated by the State Department of Archives to keep an email, if we did happen to keep an email and we have it in our possession, if somebody asks for an email that fits the description of that email that we're saving, that email has to be turned over to the person who has requested it under the Freedom of Information Act. And so, while we were talking with Robert and Angela and the, and the rest of the staff, it was clear that emails that are important records under our, the guidelines from the State Archives Department, those emails have to be saved. And then, as we sat around the table and tried to discuss this as a practical matter, you know, there's a lot of people in the city, on the city staff, that generate emails. It's very difficult to educate all of the city employees on the requirements of the State Archives Department and the records retention that you have to do. And so, and I think Roger wisely decided, you know, it's probably gonna be just a whole lot easier to create a new system for archiving emails either as they come into the city of Aiken or as they go out of the city of Aiken. And that technology is readily available today. It has gotten a lot more inexpensive. And the kind of system that the IT people are looking at now is a system that would be able to save at least five years' worth of emails regardless of, regardless of whether they were an email from the city manager telling somebody to create an ordinance or if it's an email among department heads wanting to decide if they wanna go meet for lunch somewhere. The document from the city manager is a document I think you would probably wanna save. The document, the email about going to lunch, the records people don't care if we save that email, okay? But if you do save it, it is a document that is producible under the FOI. And so, I think the plan is to have this in the budget, to have the email server so that we start saving all of the emails as they come in. We start saving all of the emails that are generated as they go out. The only other issue that presents itself, and I sent this forth in my memo, is getting city council members on board with using a city of Aiken official email address so that your emails would go through the server just like the staff emails go through the server. So, that was, that would be one change in how some of the city council members are presently doing their email business. You probably had to be hiding under a rock if you hadn't heard about Ms. Clinton's recent travails with her personal use of her personal email server. And, you know, state law presently does not say that we have to do this, okay? But it sure makes it difficult, and we've seen this with the Jim Lake's emails record request. It's difficult to immediately respond to a request when all of the council members are not on board with the official email usage. Are there any questions about any of that?
Yeah, I got, I got two emails today about an issue. I ended up calling the person, but they come through the, the city website.
Right.
I guess they're, they're addressed to me, but it's not like they come directly to me. It's almost like the, and we don't get the sender's, we get the sender's email if they wanna give it to us. It's just an awkward process as opposed to, if you send me an email, I'm gonna see Gary Smith, you know, Dick Dore, subject, and we read it. This other one, it's like they're sending it to the, to the, to the web people, and they're deciding to send it on to us, and it's, it's not really a direct means of communication. So, you're saying we should use our city of SC, cityofakensc.gov address?
Right.
Both ways?
Correct. And I, I believe, and I'm not as savvy about this as some people, but I believe Angela and Robert have told me, the way some of you have your emails set up right now, if I was to send an email to your city of Aiken address, it is automatically redirected to your.
Yes.
Personal email address.
Yes.
I like it this way.
And so, I think Rob, I'm sure Robert and Angela can address your concern. I'm not exactly sure. I can't provide you any promises as to how that would work, but I'm sure they could address that concern for you.
Well, it comes through as a message from the city of Aiken website contact form. And it's a form submission.
That may be, that may be somebody sending you an email through the website.
I think that's what it is, yes.
That's what that is, yeah.
I mean, once, you know, once you, if you were to send them an email from your.
City of Aiken.
City of Aiken address, it would be, I think it would be a more clean result than what that is.
But if, if we, and this has been a longstanding item of concern to me, can we just put, if you wanna contact Dick Dore on the website, it's dickdore@cityofakensc.gov? I see, I don't think that's on there right now. That's why we're getting these calls.
It is not. A number of years ago, council discussed that, if I recall, and there's a mixed motion on, should we put everybody's email address and therefore, people from all around the world could just be emailing you directly and maybe clogging up the system? Or should we go ahead and have it where it goes to the website? And then, all the trash or things that are not directed to a council member or a staff member, we could go ahead and deal with. So, if you want to go ahead and everybody have their, I mean, it's all or nothing. We either put everybody's email address down and say, here's the council members, email them as much as you want.
Well, it's interesting because several years ago, Aiken County got Transparency Award. I don't wanna say anything bad about Aiken County, but we're much more transparent than they are. And I thought we should have gotten the award. And when I called the people, I said, "Why did the city not get the award?" And one of the things, well, you don't have your email addresses on the website. I mean, they had two or three things that they outlined that we were never gonna get the Sunshine Award because we didn't have our email addresses, and in the area of transparency, it's important to be able to get.
He did come down and give us an award about a month later.
Did he?
We had a little ceremony outside here.
Your call worked?
In the sunshine.
In the sunshine.
What, how are we gonna, how far back would we archive these emails? You said, "We go back to five years," or is there some line in the sand that we're gonna start with this technology to say, "All of them that are from this date forward, we're gonna keep?" 2007 is kind of a year that is in the back of my mind. I have a world of emails, and then, you know, gonna get in the contest. If I have an email and the city doesn't, whose email is right? So, is there a guideline where this'll start, or is it today?
I think once the server gets into place and they're, and they get it set up, that's when they're gonna start archiving those emails and whatever they've got on the system.
And what's already in the system would also go into the archiving, so.
For up to five years.
Yeah.
Because archives in history says that you keep, what is it, Sarah? Administrative-type correspondence for five years? And so, that's, we, we said, well, if, if they're saying it's five years, we'll say it's five years. It costs us about $15,000 a year to archive the emails from that year. So, every year, we'll have to add another $15,000 just to start archiving our emails.
I'd sent a request on all the Jim Lake's emails and from 2007, actually, from about June of 2007 when we started the discussions on roads around the city. And I'd sent a request in, you know, to save emails, anything around Jim Lake from 2007, the beginning of 2007. And I don't know, is that, is that a legitimate request to do? Because this is an area that's been under contention since that time of timeframe.
And we have saved all those. That's the ones that Gary went through this morning.
Okay.
I haven't finished yet.
I'm still.
But I mean, this was a particular instance
Right.
that we know is inviable and, you know, yours truly was on that side of the disco there before. Okay.
There's one contingency, and it's following up on what Mr. Dwar said. If we get an email from a concerned citizen about a certain subject, you know, it goes into the web, into the city web, and they forward it to our private email. Now, if I answer that individual with my private email, which I usually use, that never gets back into the city system.
That's correct.
Well, that's what really needs to be fixed. Because if that gets fixed, then everything else will be documented through the server, through the city server.
Yeah. You know, I know on my personal email in my office, I have three or four different email addresses. They all come to my computer. If you don't click on the address, you can't tell whether it came to this address or this address or this other address. And so it may just require some thought on council member's part. You know, did they send this to my personal email? I can't stop a constituent from sending a, an email to your personal email address if they have it. They have it, they're going to use it. But if, if a council member is savvy enough to check it before he sends it back to the, to the citizen, then you, it should get it back into the system again.
Well, there's no way to get it back in the system if you're initiating from home unless you copy
Copy.
yourself at, you know, dickdwar@cityofakensc.gov.
Well, but I mean, you could be using your, you could be, if you're using your city of Aiken address, it should go to the server before it goes out.
I don't know how I can do that from my home computer.
Unless you forward it to your, to the city computer.
Well, you can, I mean, if you want to get technical, you can make your Outlook or whatever service you use to monitor your email, you can make it pull as many different email addresses as you want.
I believe the IT people.
But the easiest thing to do is just when you reply, just copy your city of Aiken address.
Well, if there's a way that we should do it, then give us a memo and I'll do it. But clearly, we all ought to get our business cards changed to reflect our city of Aikensc.gov addresses.
Yeah, we, our IT staff can provide you with a link that will allow you to check your city email account from your home computer. It's just a hyperlink that they can send you and then you would have to type in your username and password as you would with your private email accounts.
Yeah, if I send, if I send an email address to someone, a, a non-city employee, what I'm hearing is somehow we want to keep a record of that. And we want to keep it in a perfect world on the server, the city server. I guess in, I just said it earlier, but the only way you can do that is to copy somebody at the cityofakensc.gov.
That's, that is one way. That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get the IT people to give you the, the full answer.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we can have them do that this week.
Okay.
Gary, do you need any direction then from council?
Do not.
To, to follow up on what we're going to have?
Yes.
Okay.
Reggie, you had something? Yeah, I've got a couple more items. When we met land, this is as a result of last Thursday's discussion, we talked about the hospitality tax. And I guess one of my, not a concern, but one of clarification, is the budget balanced without the hospitality tax or is that part of the budget balance? And I'll tell you the reason I asked the question. If it's part of the budget balance, I don't think it's wise to wait until the end of May or early June on the first reading to discuss the tax. If it's a, an addendum, if you will, above and beyond, and the budget is balanced without a 1% tax, then I don't mind waiting to discuss it at that time.
Council discussed a number of things last Thursday, and one of the things that we talked about was if this hotel and the parking lot is going to move forward, and again, the parking lot is a public parking lot to be used by the public, not exclusively for the hotel. But I know we had requests in here recently from a couple of churches saying, we need another place to park downtown. So they, obviously they'll be able to use the parking garage. We've had for decades, citizens also asking for additional parking. So this is a public parking garage that we'd be building and the hospitality money could be used and in fact would almost have to be used for this garage. So that's, that's going to be the major item that we would need to have in there. You had also discussed in the proposal, some economic development for new businesses, new The plan was to start putting that in the budget so that council would have the ability when either a new project came or new opportunities arose with other businesses, industry, that a certain amount of money could be set aside for that. I've given this a lot of thought since last Thursday and probably even more so today since a couple of emails have come across my desk concerning this. I would prefer that on April 13th, I give you some information as to how that could be used and that in this particular case, we would have first reading of ordinance approving the hospitality. The reason for that is if you wait till July 1 or wait till the new budget year, we will not be getting, well, at that point then we're sending letters out, we're not going to be able to get this funding till probably sometime in August or September. And so we're lost some opportunity in that case. It also then will help us to balance the budget and to provide some of the things that you have requested within this year's budget. So Gary and I have met on this, we've talked about where it could be used. One of the interesting things, over the weekend, I was going through the South Carolina law and, believe me, I'm, I'm not an attorney. That's why I asked Gary. But the definition in South Carolina law for a tourist, a tourist is anybody living outside the city limits. So anybody in the county of Aiken would be considered a tourist. And so when they come to the theater, the festival area, a ballgame, participate in our sports, they're considered tourists and therefore everything that we do with PRT, a lot of things with buildings and grounds are all considered tourist-related because county residents, out-of-state residents, other counties are using those facilities. So using this funding for a number of things would be much better if we could go ahead and make a decision on that at the next meeting and then the following meeting because it will take two readings to approve it.
Now, but the budget, is, but the budget that you're working on for 15, 16 fiscal year, does it require the hospitality tax to balance the budget?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I, no, it does not.
Okay, that was my key concern. I, I didn't want us to go into the next year because this thing is, is probably going to, you know,
But on the
... a dull roar in the room when we talk about it.
Same token, it does not have anything in there for economic development, parking garages or anything else of that nature.
That was a key, a key point. Okay. Thank you.
Concern I have with the hospitality tax and I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about it, but I would hope it would be in the budget as a separate fund, a hospitality tax fund.
It has to by law.
Okay, so all the money would go in there and then council would approve whatever money comes out of it.
Right. And I would have for you on the 13th, a standalone budget, we're calling it 014. Currently, the accommodation funds are at 007, so this is 014. And that will be a standalone budget showing the money coming in and how it would be spent.
Now, the, the diagram that council member Mary gave us contains some incentives for business licenses, which I think need to be staffed. I'm not sure that we can do what, what you outlined in there, but I'd like to find out.
Not, not through the hospitality tax, it cannot.
No. What, what he proposed was changing business license rates for the big users, increasing them very slightly and using the, the delta that you got to, to subsidize smaller businesses so to, so to give them a credit. Now, I don't know if we can do that or not, if we can, and I think the city attorney will have to look at the law to see it.
There are, there are eight different rates.
I understand that.
Rate eight is a lot of variety of professionals and other things, but rates one through seven has to have an increasing increment between each rate. We can't all of a sudden say, okay, all the Walmarts and the Sams and other large, big box users, we're going to charge you much less than some other rate.
Right.
We, we have to stick by the tried and true. Now, that doesn't mean we can't rebate back some funding if we want to look at certain restaurants and everything because of the extra work that would take to put together the numbers and the, writing the checks and everything else for the hospitality tax.
Well, that's one of the things that he, that he talked about. And I, I guess my concern along with Councilman Ebner's is that I want to make sure that if we do a hospitality tax, we're, we're putting it basically the way he laid it out, the way Philip laid it out. So that we're using some for economic development. I would consider if we use money for Teresa's, I would consider that economic development because if we don't do it, it's not going to get developed and the same thing across the street. So in other words, that money needs to be channeled for, for that benefit. That's
And what, what's going to happen is you would see an 014 budget and that's going to be primarily things for parks and recreation, flowers, trees, holtland gardens. But then that frees up money within the general fund budget that allows us to do this economic development. So they're going to kind of, you, you can't put it into the accommodation or hospitality tax, money for what you're talking about. It's just not allowed by state law.
So what it does is it just, money that you're already spending in the general fund is now funded by the hospitality tax, so that money is left in the general fund to do something different with. So you can make a dollar-for-dollar use of that money for economic development or for the Teresa's improvement or other stormwater or infrastructure improvements. And so it's not really, you're not really, it's not a gain or anything. It's simply there's money that you no longer need to spend from the general fund that you can now spend on, on those, on those items.
So very, very likely to get lost in a shuffle. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, and that's why we have to somehow come up with a clarity so it shows that, you know, maybe we'll create another budget that'll transfer, let's just say it transfers a million dollars from the general fund to an economic development fund. So that you could kind of track where this money's going and how it's going to be used. And we'll come up the, I don't want to use 013, that's not a good number. 012 or something, that'll be an economic development budget.
And I think we all in that meeting Thursday were clear, I think we all agree on, on this. And I mean, we just, Roger said he was going to get back to us with a concept of how he, what the wording and the clarification was going to be and the mechanism for it. And then once we have that, we can parse it and tweak it and make it suit us. But right now, we don't, we haven't got a starting point.
So Roger, you're going to come back with us with a separate recommendation?
That's, that's my intent, yes.
Thank you.
I think, I think there's one thing here that, you know, and I said this at Thursday's meeting, I don't mind repeating now. We as council have a preponderance not to follow our rules sometime. But I think with this hospitality money, we really need to know, coming in is pretty easy. You get a, you know, you get a check and it comes in. But how we shuffle the money, and I use that word loosely, from one account to the other, we need to do a pretty good accounting for that.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because this can come back to haunt us. Because the city has had a, my understanding is the city's had a hospitality tax before. And if we don't, you know, have really daylight or sunshine or LED light shining on this so citizens can see what it is, it's going to turn into a nightmare.
Let's see what he comes up with and then if, if we don't like it, we can.
Now, this is, you know, again, it, there are state statutes of what you could use the money for and what you can't use the money for. Those, number one, have to be followed just like we have with the accommodation taxes. We, we have funneled money to help pay for some of the PRT and some of the buildings and grounds. And then some of it goes for infrastructure, bricks and mortars, as we've discussed in the past. There are some other things I'll discuss at the next meeting, but once it's been in place for a year, you could use 50% of it for police, fire, EMS, other celery-type positions that support tourists and individuals coming into your community. And that's, that's again where Philip was talking about, we'd be taking some of the general fund money and using it eventually over here in the accommodations and slash hospitality that would then free up the money to do some of the things that you've been wanting to do.
We were talking about using almost half of that money for the garage in the four or five-year timeframe.
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay. The other thing.
Well, I was just going to say, I think we should see what he comes back with, but if we're going to do it, I'm, I'm okay with doing it on April 13th. We'll just need to have that on or before April 13th so we can try to.
My, my next step is twofold. One, I'm going to be sitting down with Philip Mary and going over some of that, that list there. And number two, I'm already preparing the list for our attorney to take a look at. We discussed it preliminarily this morning, but now I'm coming up with actual line item listing of some potentiality as how we could spend that money that would fit within the state law.
One question here, you say we're going to have a separate subject or a separate item basically for the accommodations tax or hospitality tax, and we're going to have a balanced budget. Now, when you start collecting money for your hospitality, all of a sudden, you're going to have to rework the budget or at least make modifications to the budget to take money out of the budget or for a different purpose or redesignate it for a different purpose as you get money in the hospitality and you can supplement the existing budget.
Correct. Currently, I have a budget that's very close to being balanced with assuming no hospitality tax. I'm now going to be developing a whole new budget that's going to be as if we had a hospitality tax. And so I will actually have two different budgets that are ready for council.
What you're saying is we're going to be modifying the budget almost every month as we go along?
No.
None.
You'll be approving a budget before the end of the fiscal year that either it's going to have a hospitality tax in it or it's not going to have a hospitality tax.
Good.
And that'll be presented on the 13th as to what would be done with the hospitality tax and how you could mirror some economic development through that, depending on what information I get at that meeting. Then we'll have another meeting that'll go over the entire budget to explain where, what would be done next year. If that makes sense. It's going to be a lot of work on the part of some interim city manager. I'll probably get Stuart to help me and I'll probably get Kim to help me and her staff and others, but we'll have something to you in a couple of weeks.
Well, I think that's important. And if we can ask our Michael, our interior decorator in my, over here. I think it's important, if y'all wouldn't mind, including that in, in your write-up of tonight's meeting, that that'll be on the 13th because a lot of people are going to be interested in that. And it's very important that we start off on the right foot with it.
Well, the state of South Carolina, and I just Googled it, is very specific about how these monies are spent. Roger will bring those rulings to us so that we will know specifically how he will spend those dollars. But if you go online, it will tell you specifically.
61, I think, 590 and 790.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. We had a letter here from SC DOT on our famous wooden bridges. Is that, what is the next step now? This is, there's some profound statements. Has this been sent out to the community yet?
I, I just received this today, so I, I wanted to give you all a copy of it.
Phil Johnston has it already.
Yeah, he does.
And obviously, there's a number of people within the community that were on the list from the Historic Aiken Foundation to our local senator and others. So I wanted council to take a look at it, but it essentially says that we could do York Street, bring it up to design standards, load limit standards, and there'd be a slight grade increase, probably is going to have very little effect on most of the surrounding property. The Fairfield Street, which originally they were talking about about a five to six-foot grade differential and essentially the slopes approaching the bridge would have been several feet higher than the surrounding properties that are there currently. They now go ahead and lower the speed limit, reduce some of the load limit. And again, they don't say exactly how much, but they said they could significantly lower the height from what they had previously. How much that is, that's something we'd have to determine. And then in their proposal here is the third one is to And then in their proposal here, is the third one, is to eliminate traffic on Union Street Bridge altogether. So at some point in time, we're gonna have to sit down with SC DOT. We've done this in a couple of different committee meetings, one with a large group of citizens, one with a couple of council members, and I would say, to answer your question, Mr. Ebner, the next step again is to get the group together, and to go over the proposals we have here.
Okay, some serious issues in this letter.
But if council has any thoughts on this, please give it to us, and otherwise, we'll probably have a committee meeting that, I know when the citizens came, they brought a large contingent, probably about 15 folks, but it's gonna be something that council needs to be the driver of it.
I think that our city, and I'm gonna use the city staff as a whole, because this has, you know, the public works, public safety involved, it has PRT involved, and it has the engineering and utilities involved in all of this, because obviously, if the Union Street Bridge gets closed, it gets tied into the Railroad Depot and Tourist Office. So I think it'd be wise for internally, you know, so at least some brainstorming go on, you know, prior to that committee meeting that we would have, and I think that would be wise for the city to have some ideas.
Again, we just got the letter in, I would expect to be talking to Mitchell Metz. I've talked to him once on the phone already, asking him to put everything in writing, so we get more clarity, and as Mr. Ebner said, staff will talk about it, and then we'll be getting back to council on it.
Okay, I got one other subject, it's on the board, it's our famous bicycle lanes. I think one thing that council needs to be aware of, every once in a while, some of this paper shows up in our information package, and rather than information, it becomes the law of the land. Back in January, when we had a work session, Mr. Ledoux furnished us with the ordinance, as well as a document dated June 18th, that said that city council had approved bike lanes, and guide lanes, and stuff on a number of city streets. I think all of this documentation needs to be put together, and resent back to council. It goes back to way early last year, then to January, I think it was January 23rd, we had a work session, and now, these two sheets of paper show up in here. And I'm just concerned that, what credibility do these have? Is this what we're gonna use? Is that why it's in the minutes, or why is it in there?
Stuart? How did you get that, Reggie? Reggie?
It's in our packet.
It's in our packet, it's page, I have it on there.
Tom, Lex worked this up as a possible format that could be used in the future to go through projects. It's not necessarily anything that we're gonna go ahead, each project has to be looked at by council on an individual basis. And again, as I stated earlier, my feeling is, this is what's important, to bring these types of projects before council, so that you could go ahead and decide on a case-by-case basis as to what you wanted to do.
Well, you know, my short term of five years on council, when this stuff gets into the minutes of the meeting, if you will, the next interpretation is not just for information, but it becomes the law of the land. And I guess when I see this in there, we need to put this whole package back together, what the current policy is of the city, because the current policy is different than the ordinances we have passed. And that document is dated June 18th of 2014, and you sent out a package to us, I think it was January 23rd work session of this year. So I guess that's my concern, and how do we keep this under control, that the next thing that comes in front of the city council is a bike lane on a certain street?
Is your concern this particular document, or how bicycle infrastructure's gonna be funded or approved?
I'm concerned that this becomes part of the way the city operates.
You always say that we have to put stuff in the ordinance to make it the law, and that stuff just in, you know, just in the packet, but...
This is just here for information.
Yeah.
Well, let me just say that I would think the proper procedure is, if someone is gonna offer it for information, that a presentation be made to council first with questions, and then it's in the next meeting. But while I support bike pathways in our town, if there are questions, you don't know who to feed those questions, this is just information at this point in time, so...
It appears to be pretty well done.
Right.
I mean, it was just information, we're not asking for approval of this or anything else, it's just...
Well, that's what Reggie's concerned was, sometimes if it's there, then it's automatically assumed.
We're not trying to slide something by.
Well, yeah. As time passes, and Reggie's gone, and all of a sudden, there's a bike lane down Park Avenue, and no parking, I think somebody's gonna probably be upset.
Tom is here, if you wanna put on the five-minute clock and talk together.
No, I think it ought to be brought up at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna have that on the agenda?
I'm just still not clear what the question is.
I think we need to bring back...
The question is, does information's in the packet, and...
You've got something to add, please do.
Tom Lex, resident of City Aiken, what's up there, Councilman Ebner, is, in previous meetings, there were comments and concerns raised about that there was no process for how we were gonna go through defining where bike lanes versus share the lane, and whatnot, how that process was gonna work. Having heard that in a number of meetings, I took the liberty of saying, all right, let me put down a proposed process on paper, so that it at least could be put before the council to look at and see if that was a working, a place to start from, to create this defined process. There's another page that goes with this, I don't know if you have it in the system. This is just the funding part of it, but the one that comes before it is actually the one that, where we define, there it is, okay. So you can see there, we have a proposal coming out of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and it goes through a process of determining, is it gonna be a share the lane, or is it gonna be a bike lane, trying to put the checkpoints in there for city council to be involved, and to weigh in on the recommendation. And then clearly, if we're looking for bike lanes, the whole issue of parking, if that's gonna be impact, we try to put the right checkpoints in there, so that we don't end up repeating the process we went through. And so it's an attempt to put a process on paper, a decision logic, that the city could then use, and try to put into some kind of a formalized procedure that city council approves.
Would you plan on putting it in your plan?
I'm sorry?
Would you plan on putting this in the EPAC?
Well, it wouldn't go into the bicycle pedestrian plan, per se, it would really be a procedure that the city has in place to say, when we come in with a recommendation, we've gotta follow this process.
Well, the only reason I mention that, I'm sure it's an ideal procedure for any city, including North Augusta, or any municipality.
Right.
It's good logic, I had followed it, and it was a good logic path for the process.
Okay.
I would have advised you to have a cover, I thought, I would have thought you would have had a cover letter explaining what you just explained.
Well, what I did is, I reviewed it with the city manager, and assistant city manager, and basically left it with them, so I did not submit it by an email or a letter, it was really a sit-down session, and with the idea being that it was a starting point for if they wanted to put it into a procedure or not, and present it then to city council. So that's the background of this.
I didn't make my point clear, let me start again. We have two, currently, we have two ordinances that are approved in relation to bicycles. One of them was initial one, early 2014, one of them was recently about the, getting the grants. And then, in between that, there is a June 18th letter issued by the city staff outlining the next streets to be done. And then, we get this piece of information, I think this should be put in a package, and as we add to it, it ought to be collected together. And what, there's nothing wrong with this format, but I think it needs to have the other documents with it, on top of it. And if I'm not mistaken, the one is in like February, or March of 14, with the first ordinance, then the second ordinance was just a couple of months ago, what we did to authorize the grants, for the go after the grants. And then on June 8, then on January 23rd of this year, Mr. Ledoux kind of put a little package together for our work session, and then in that package was the June 18th of 2014 outline of what the city staff said council approved. And I think we need to be keeping that together, and I'll use Mr. Lex's words from before, you know, I do due diligence, and I do risk analysis, and we need to keep all of that together, that's how I keep up with these dates, is a neat little file.
Absolutely.
So I don't think then, with Ms. Price's, we just need to keep it all together as we discuss it at council. And I think it'd be wise to at least reissue that, and include these as part of that, if this, what the intent is. We need to keep up with it over time, because this is gonna go on for years, and we intend it to. And as we move into the next processes, like Mr. Lex said, we need to be a little more due diligence on it. So that'd be my request, that we have staff put these, all of these documents together for us. And it can be in the petitions and information section, and that way, it becomes a piece of the...
Okay, just so I'm clear as to what you want, you want in the next council agenda, everything that we have concerning bike lanes and paths from the very beginning?
There's two ordinances of what I'm aware of, since I've been on council, it was the first one we passed, and I think it was in early 14, and I can look up the date.
I mean, we could look that up, but...
There's an ordinance there...
You just want this as information, then?
Well, we're getting this piecemeal, and my concern is, is this part of what we're gonna do, and if it is, it ought to be along with the June 18th of 2014 document that outlines what staff thought city council approved. And then, we had the work session in January, and I think it was the 23rd of this year, where you put a little package together for us to review. But now, we got this piece of information, and I think we ought to collect that together, just what's been approved.
If you have a point of contact in the city...
Just putting it all together, keeping it together.
Yes.
We have a file in our office that keeps all the stuff for bike paths together, but, so, just to make clear, you want this for the next council agenda, to approve it, or...
No, just to put it in petitions as a group of paperwork where we are today. We get pieces of this, but we don't have the whole package put together every time. And usually, when we build on one ordinance to the next, we have all the documents behind it, or in front of it.
We'll try to meet your request.
Well, I'll help you with my request.
Okay, anything else?
Only one other thing, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know whether we formally done this or not, but congratulating Aiken Standard Crew for all the awards that they have received recently, they've done a great job. Let's give it my hand, please.
Make a speech.
What, was it nine, Mayan?
All right. We're adjourned.
Ten, ten.